Okay. A motion to approve the agenda as written. Motion, please.
I'll make a motion.
The second. Matt? All in favor? I. Motion carries six zero. A motion to approve the minutes of November 16th as presented, motion. Michelle, second, Aaron, all in favor? I. Motion carries six zero. Motion to approve the minutes of November 18th as presented. Motion. Aaron, second. Barbara? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries six zero. A motion to approve the minutes of December 2nd, special business meeting as presented, motion. Matt, second, Aaron? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries six zero. Now we move on to superintendent update. Sarah?
Okay, thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. I'm going to start what I typically end with, which is our principal reports. So Ms. Connolly, would you like to begin with the elementary school?
Sure. This morning, several elementary and middle school teachers participated in professional development on lesson resources and digital manipulatives available on the Greg Tang math website, which was purchased for use this year. For our younger students, these online math tools are very helpful for both in-person and remote instruction, so we thank the board for that resource. And with the second item I'd like to talk about is the initiation from Cara Joczewski, a teacher's created a why I teach display with quotes about what encourages them to do what they do every day. All the quotes are connected to the word you, which represents our students. This SEL project was very, is very uplifting to read, and I will be posting it to our Facebook page later this week. But on that note, I'd like to close with a personal thank you to all of the elementary staff for their flexibility and responsive responsiveness to our students and their families' needs during the recent GWL pause and also during these first few weeks back from the Thanksgiving holiday, and we're looking for wrapping up forward to wrapping up our time before the winter break.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Connolly. And just so the board is aware, the Greg Tang math website subscription was paid for out of title grant money organized from the federal government. Mr. Globchik?
Thank you. I'm going to start where Diane left off, that I just really want to start by thanking also the staff for all of their efforts with being remote during the pause and also now with kids who are also streaming in their classrooms. We know that it's not an easy time, you know, this year, but we really, really thank them. So we're so thrilled to welcome Carrie Rosenbloom to the main office. She joins Eileen Cristiano in completing our amazing front office admin team. Definitely want to thank Kristin Scotto, who stepped in at the last minute last August for a month, and then a couple months, and then six months, and then she's been here a year and a half. So thank you so much to Kristin and also welcome Carrie. We already loved having her in the office and it's been a week and a day. Then lastly, just as with Halloween and Pinkout Day, we're going to ugly most festive sweater competition in the same way. So our intrepid photo team led by Chris Ferry will go around taking pictures of students and then each grade level will vote, and then we'll put those winners as well as a video as we did before on Facebook. So in case I don't see you before the break, have a happy and healthy Christmas and New Year.
Thank you very much. At this time, Mrs. Polczynski is going to give you the board an update on the virtual clubs. Lena, if you want to unmute your mic, I will pull up your presentation.
Good evening, everyone.
Can you see?
No.
Okay, hold on one second, and I will share. Just one second.
Good evening, everyone. So tonight I will be presenting our virtual after-school clubs for the 2020-21 school year. Just a little background, due to the current pandemic, the district was unable to offer in-person after-school clubs as we have in the past to avoid intermingling of cohorts of students. So after much consideration, we have decided to offer virtual after-school clubs, beginning initially with a reduced number of club choices. This decision was made to allow us to gauge interest and also to begin to assess participation during the trial period. So once we begin to collect the data from that, we will then look to add additional virtual clubs in the future. So the timeline and how we presented this to families, flyers were made and sent via Messenger with a link to an online registration form. Then I sent several reminders via Messenger prior to our start date, reminding families to register for the clubs if they were interested. A final reminder was sent via Messenger as well as posted on the district Facebook page on December 7. At that point, we were able to look at the data and the registration, and we were able to form classes based on the number of students that registered, and teachers then created Google Meet links and Google classrooms, which were shared with families for those particular clubs. And all of our virtual clubs began actually today, December 14. So these were the-
They begin this week, right Lena?
Yes.
They all start this week.
They all start this week. I believe our first club started today. The Spanish, I think it was intermediate Spanish. So this is the week that we said we were starting our virtual clubs. So if you look here, I put a chart here to show you the virtual clubs that were offered, as well as the number of students who registered. So Virtual Lego Club, that was open to our K3, that was 34 students registered for that club, so that was a really high-interest club. We also offered our STEAM Kids Virtual Club, where we had 27 students register. We offered a virtual book club in which we had 10 students register. We offered Middle School Magazine, where we had nine students register. Student Government, we had 25 students register. And for Intermediate Spanish, which was geared towards our fifth and sixth grade students, we had 11 students register. And for the Beyond the Art Classroom, we had 10 students register. So we were very excited to see the response from families and parents that registered their children.
And when we went to choose these clubs initially for our trial period, we went to look for a range of clubs, clubs that covered a range of interests and a wide range of grade levels as well. So we tried to have a reading, an art, a science, a hands-on, and also to make sure we spanned all the grade levels, so everyone kindergarten through eighth grade had an opportunity to do so. So that's how we chose our initial clubs.
Thank you, Sarah. So then our next steps, we will begin tracking attendance and participation, and we will begin to gather up the data. We'll have about three weeks of data that we plan to present to the board in January, and at that time, the board will then decide, be able to decide whether to move forward with adding additional clubs after this trial period. Again, I'd like to thank everyone on the board on behalf of the district for allowing us to put together the virtual after-school clubs. I did receive a lot of positive feedback from families. They were very excited to have this offer to them.
Were there any questions from the board on clubs or where we are with the clubs before we move on to the next part?
Okay. Thank you, Lena, for the presentation.
At this time, Amy Petrazzi, Mrs. Petrazzi, if you want to unmute your mic, is going to talk just a little bit about updating the board on the assistance that we, to the nurses that we have.
Good evening, everybody. I just wanted to briefly review the aspects, what brought us to having nursing assistants to help our nurses. And before I do that, I do want to thank Amber Penya, our elementary school nurse, Liz King, who is her assistant, Laura LaRoche, who's our middle school nurse, and Lauren Tuwi, who has been Laura's assistant for all the hard work they've put in prior to school opening and every day since. It's been a real, you know, hard job for them, and they've really stepped up as always, but really this year in particular. So at the start, during the summer, we were tasked by the state ed department to create a restart plan to get approved by the state ed department, and in doing so, we had to take guidance from the CDC, Department of Health, New York State Education Department on how to open safely, both from a medical perspective, as well as that encompassed the hygiene and custodial and so forth. In reading through all that literature, we had come to the decision that it was very important, and again, with their guidance, that we had a sick and a well office. And in order to limit and allow for our nurses to really take care of our most pressing medical issues that might arise throughout the day, we determined having a, an assistant, and again, we thank the board for approving that, to take care of those non-emergency situations that might arise during the course of the school day, so that the nurse was able to really concentrate on the things that were most pressing. I'm happy to report that that was a successful transition in both of the buildings. But the good news to that is that we really have had a minimal amount of sick children that the nurse has had to attend to on a daily basis, so much so that we're really averaging one student per week that is getting sent home due to some illness. It's not necessarily COVID-related, it's just an illness that the nurse determines the student does not need, you know, that would need further attention and could not stay in the school building. And actually, today Sarah shared with me that she did get numbers from Amber and Laura that we're getting zeros. Today was a zero day. The last few days, you know, prior to us coming back from the pause were zeros. So it's showing that again, parents are adhering to not sending their kids in when they're ill, and when that needs to happen, that it's few and far between. So in having discussions as an admin team and also in me just talking with Amber and Laura, we talked about that right now, having two people in those areas in both buildings may not be at 100% capacity, or 100% of the time may not be the most optimum use of those assistants. So we're proposing, and we've started to utilize those assistants to do other tasks throughout the building to aid the principals. So if the principals need them for another part of the day, whether it be a lunch duty or to help in the offices, or even to help sub, we've been beginning to use those assistants to do that. Of course, we're mindful if at any point in time they need to be in the nurse's office. I did speak with Laura and Amber, and they're aware of that, as well as the building principals, that they will, their priority is to the nurse's office. But again, both nurses were very open to the idea at this point, that they did not need them on a full-time basis throughout the day. And so we are looking to continue outsourcing them to the principals in areas that they think they're needed. And that's where we're at with the nurses and nursing assistants.
Thank you.
Questions or?
Does anyone have questions for Amy?
No, just that they are. If a situation arises, they can be put back in rather quickly, right?
Yes, yes, yep. They're not doing anything, and I had a conversation with both Diane and Jeffrey. They're not doing anything that they couldn't technically be pulled from. And even when they're not, let's say it's a day they don't need to be pulled, but it's something that they might be able to do in their designated areas in the nurse's office, such as envelope stuffing or something like that, they're doing things like that as well.
Okay. Any other questions from anybody?
All right.
Thanks, Amy.
On tonight's agenda is the elementary cafeteria layout, and so I just wanted to update the full board on and the community on where we are with the elementary cafeteria project. So the elementary cafeteria project is a three-part project. And part one, part one of the project is we are working on water mitigation. The water table is extremely high down there. Anytime it rains, we have a problem with flooding, so we are looking to add additional tools and resources to mitigate the water. In addition, we want to upgrade the student area and as well as bring the kitchen up to code. So with the mitigating of the water, it would be adding sump pumps to the areas where flooding is still occurring. In the student area, we would like to make it more student-friendly. We want to add a bathroom in the basement. Right now, if his child is at lunch, needs to go to the bathroom, they have to go upstairs away from everybody and make it feel less what I call basement-y. So the pipes sticking out, the storage that's down there, water buckets and those types of things, making sure a place for everything and everything has a place. And again, then bringing our kitchen up to code and working on the functionality of the layout of the kitchen. So in 2016, we talked about these needs. We talked about that there's no bathrooms in the space, the lighting and the air quality was poor. The acoustics make it difficult for students who are sensitive to noise. The serving space, the tray is much higher than the kids. They can't really see the food when it's there. So the serving space is not appropriate for small children. There's the water filtration issues when it rains, and the kitchen needs to be upgraded. So when this proposition went out in 2016, this is actually copied exactly from the, it's actually screenshot, exactly from the newsletter. At the time, this was the design with the architect that we're working at. They were in theory or conceptual design. But we decided to, ultimately, the district and the Board of Education decided to change from this plan. Because of the water issue specifically, the fear that if we dig out into, and my mouse won't appear, so I'm not sure, but down towards, you'll see a light well area under the cafeteria. The fear was that if we remove all that dirt and dig, we would hit water. And that stems from when the elevator was put in, in the early 2000s, I believe. They hit water and had a really big expense. So the, we are working, we worked to eliminate any digging or expansion of the space. However, we did work to make sure that all of the needs listed at the top are still addressed. And that's, this is just basically what I said. So this would be the tentative design of the new cafeteria space. I really need a mouse, so I'm going to do this for a minute, and just accept my apologies, but I'm going to do this, so hopefully you can see my mouse a little bit. Is that, can you see my mouse? Now, okay. So you'll see here are the, these three little circles are the poles that exist, and they would still be there. They're looking at moving to circular cafeteria tables. There also, here's the bathroom that they'll be installing, as well as a janitor's closet for storage of materials, a water fountain, there'll be a TV on this wall as well. And then there will be several booths placed along the edges. Make, give it more of a restaurant kind of casual dining feel for the students. Then over on this side in the redesign of the kitchen, you'll see that everything's in a straight line here. We have a wall here. It's going to look very similar to what the middle school looks like currently, where the students walk right up, and it's all built into the kitchen. So this would be the layout of the kitchen itself. Be building a new door here and closing off some other doors that are here, a new door here. This would be the prep area with freezer space, the dish area and storage. There was a door here currently that blocks off some potential storage space, so they're going to take that wall out and create more storage space. This is the elevator, that's why, that's dead space. So this would be the prep area. And then over here would be the cooking area, the range, a steamer, two refrigerators. And then over here would be the serving area for the students. Students will be able to reach in and get milk and juice, the hot entrees, the cold and the deli, ice cream, the cashier would be standing. So it becomes one space where the cafeteria employees can walk around, move, serve the students on one space and don't have to leave the kitchen space to serve. In conjunction with this, because of the new layout of the kitchen, there are some chutes or chases that would need to go straight up to the roof. And we have worked with the engineers to make sure that they create the most limited impact on the new office spaces as possible. So there is a new chase going in the new nurse's office in the corner, and this is currently a dead space. There are cabinets here and the desk here in an L shape, so this is already dead space. So it would go right there. The second one would go here. We were able to cheat a little bit out of the copy room, and then here in the main office area to create a second chaser. Right here in the main office, there are cabinets, so it would almost look like they were built-in cabinets, as opposed to just coming off the wall. We'd be moving the door in the elementary office so that it backs up to this chase here, and it backs up to a wall. And then the last chase would be inside the vestibule. So you come in the vestibule, and it would just be a little corner cut out of the vestibule. Very preliminary, as in, we haven't, we just received this as a potential plan, but we have not discussed any sort of color designs yet with the engineers, and we have not given any feedback on this yet. But this is a very initial thought from the engineers of what the space could potentially look like in terms of colors, themes, et cetera. And you'll see it kind of brings to life. And what it does is if you imagine a room with the four walls, and then this is north wall, yeah, that is the north wall, north wall, east wall, south wall, and west wall. And then just kind of flatten them out around the space, and I'll show you a slightly different view in a minute. But they're looking at doing bright colors, tabletops, bringing in the Lakers theme, bringing in the mountains and the lake here, and bringing everything together. And again, bringing in the Laker theme, the pause. This is a sample of what this wall might look like. The new layout, server line will be different. We just decided what that layout was going to be last week, so they have not had a chance to really update it. They put in a little bit of a rectangle here to see, but it would be through that space that the kids would walk up and get their food and things, but then they would decorate and color around it. So where the middle school has brick, this would be a brightly colored area. The wall, where they're looking to, the pipes that you can see, to cover up as many pipes as possible. Any pipes that aren't colored, covered up, they would be looking to include them so that it looks like almost they're a part of the design. Here's the wall with the bathroom, putting the TV back up, and then the north wall with just a big, huge design mural across the whole thing. Are there questions at all from the board on the cafeteria space or layout prior to the agenda item for this evening?
Um, I think it's okay, somebody, go ahead.
I have a couple of questions.
Absolutely.
The subpumps. Is there a battery backup system to them, or do we have a backup generator at the elementary school?
Rob, can you answer that?
We have a backup generator specifically for some pumps to freezers.
Okay, so no matter what happens, those pumps will be?
Correct. It's a natural gas-powered system, so it always has fuel.
Thank you very much. My other question is the tables. Say this pandemic's not ending anytime soon, are those tables going to be useful? Or are they not going to be useful?
So right now, all the student, because of the pandemic, students are eating in their classrooms. I don't see us returning to that space until students can be closer together, and we don't have to worry about that anymore.
Okay, thank you.
Um, I'll just jump in here. When it comes to the water and some backgrounds for our newer board members, oh, I'm going to say a year and a half ago, maybe, we had tectonics do a whole engineering of the underground water and possible solutions if we were able to, before we decided to not build a freestanding addition. So we went through many different possibilities and and how to handle different things. So it is very it's more important, I think, to stay within our walls down there in order to draw the water away. The school's actually built, you know, on a, on a very high water table, so in order to draw the water away, it's a very extremely expensive thing if we were to not go with the sump pump system and to try and go with a different approach. So we, you know, a lot of, a lot of thought went into the change, along with the engineering to back up that change. I just want to say that. And the built-in tables were to help bring in that, the design to soften up some of the things that we can't change on, like the way the walls and the pipes run, and it builds in a softet so that all the exposed pipes, except for those three sets, are completely gone. You can't see them anymore because of the way that the tables are built in, which is a nice feature. And the other thing is we've, we've approached the subject of noise with sound deadening and LED lighting to brighten up the space to get in a more natural light feel. So it's been a work in progress for a long time to come up with the right solution. And you know, we hope we're, we're there. Anybody else? Yukon for facilities, you're new to the committee, but do you have anything else to say on the procedure we've gone through to get to here?
Briefly, the material and the colors haven't been chosen yet, so don't, don't be alarmed at this diagram. That's all I wanted to say. And, and so, so the booths, just to, just to mention this quickly, the booths will be sort of like the booths that you see at McDonald's. You know, so they will be, they will be sitting four. And with a low hanging, not, not low hanging light, but one of those lights that are on top of the, the table, you don't have that. It's, I think it's going to look nice. And we have to come up with the color and the materials next. That's it.
Thanks.
I have one more question. That just popped into my head. When you mentioned covering the pipes with material, what are you covering it with?
A built-in softet.
All right, good. So it's accessible?
Yes, yes. It's a built-in softet to just completely cover that area, but it is, there is accessibility to it. They're HVAC pipes. They're not plumbing.
All right, that's, that's what I was worried about.
Yep.
Thank you.
Aaron?
Is, what's the background on this whole project? Is the money already allocated? When is this project supposed to happen?
Anne, do you want to speak to that, about the history of the project and the money?
The resolution specified that we would bond this project, so it would not come out of reserves. And it's a $2 million project that's already voter-approved.
And Anne, can you talk a little bit about what the advantages of bonding are in terms of the district?
By bonding the project, we will By bonding the project, we will um, we have a mortgage payment over eighteen years and will line up the state aid, the building aid, to line up with the payments so, to reduce the uh, financial burden on the district. I'm not sure that answered your question, Aaron.
Oh, that answered my question, that answered the first question, are we, are we, are we trying to do this like this year coming up this summer?
So I, go ahead, Anne, sorry.
Well, we hope to, we have to um, see what the timeline is on materials and design and we'll also uh, if we can expedite the process with SED, we'd have a better chance of making uh, the March bidding process to start the project as soon as possible. We of course want to make sure, we don't know where we are in the pandemic and materials, so we wouldn't want to start until we have, you know, for all the um, the kitchen equipment, for example, we'd want to know that, that we could receive everything by June.
But, so yes, so the, the goal is to have this project be in place for fall 2021.
And this, and this new design is the same cost as the first design?
We won't know until we go out to bid, what, what's going on in the, the market.
Um, the original uh, budget, uh, the original estimates and everything from the uh, architect, this goes back um, five, five years?
Yes.
Um, this, this started, yeah, five years ago, um, and so it, the, the two point two million was the original project proposed in the beginning. Um, that figure would be a lot more today, uh, just with the, the changes in, in cost of living. But we're hoping to come in under the two million dollar part, definitely. The um, original project, I don't think had as much in the kitchen. If I'm remembering correctly, it didn't have as mu, it didn't completely renovate the kitchen originally, did it Sarah? It upgraded it, but it didn't completely redo it. Does anybody, I, I, if I remember correctly, we didn't have a, a, a new layout. Did we?
I think it was shifted, and I'm just, I'm pulling it up here and I'm trying to recall, everything was kind of shifted.
Um, yeah, it was.
Go ahead.
No, it, it, I, it, it had some, but I don't think it had it to the point that it is now. Um, that kitchen is antiquated, if you've been down there. Um, and along the lines of discussions with the board, we've um, had many discussions with uh, over, over the last two years about our food and shifting from a heat and serve to a cook and serve. Um, to, in a hopes of after the pandemic of getting some better, not better quality, but, but some more home cooked food. Um, in the same, you know, keeping our budget the same in the kitchen, but in order to do that, the kitchen would have to have been upgraded anyway. Right now, basically, all they can do is heat and serve. Um, so there, there was just different things that have evolved over the years and different members on the committee, i- it's, it's been a five, I'm going to say a five year process, it started before I was on the board with the first vote that went down. And, and was defeated. So i- it's a long time coming.
Um, and I think that uh, if, once we get this up to SED and we get it approved, um, Anne, please correct me if I'm wrong, but it's approved. And then we wouldn't have to move forward this spring, even if it's approved now, right? We could delay it a year, if the, the cost came back and it was just exorbitant because of COVID and everything. We could put it off one more year to try, wait and see if costs come down, but it would still be an approved project with SED. So we wouldn't have to go through that process again, correct? We could then just pick up.
Correct.
Yeah, I think you've learned a lot too from the project this summer, right, in terms of supply being available and whatnot. And it's, you know, we're not going to have the stuff we need to finish by now that we should start.
Exactly.
Right, any other questions?
I have one more, uh, is it the same architect used as the other projects engineer?
It's not, we decided to switch. Uh, did you just say go ahead, we can move on? Okay, yes, no, it is not the same, we, this is Felinger engineers. Because it was in the basement and the water concerns, we went with a company whose lead expertise was engineering as opposed to the architect, architecture and then design.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
Michelle or Barbara, do you have any questions?
No, not at this time.
Okay.
Um, attendance, Lena and Sue, Lena Polczynski and Sue Lapri are going to speak just a little bit about the attendance of during in-person versus e-learning as well as the state attendance report changes that are coming our way. So, let me pull that up.
Good evening again, um, tonight we will be presenting on attendance updates prior, during and after the pause as well as some new state reporting requirements. And Susan Lapri, our school data analyst, will be here to present with me.
Good evening, um, the graph that we're looking at here, the numbers represent the average absences per day. So if we start out with the week prior to the pause, since the pause was a seven day period, I took the numbers from the prior seven uh, days, the absentee rate. And the average for the elementary school was five per day. And that, that range could have been anywhere from like three to eight, and we just um, averaged it out per day for a better understanding of the information that we're looking at. The middle school had a average of sixteen absences per day with a total for the district of twenty-one. During the seven day pause, the elementary rose a bit to nine per day. The middle school dropped to eight per day, giving us a total of seventeen appen, absences per day during the pause for the district. After the pause, we had four days after the pause, and I thought it'd be interesting to throw that in and Sarah agreed that it would be something to look at when we come back. You know, how we bounce back. So we saw that the elementary school had seven absences average per day, the middle school eleven, and then the district total was eighteen. So for the elementary school, we'll see, we saw a rise during the pause and then a drop back down. Now, one thing that we can note, that number nine, we had at least two kindergarten students that chose to refrain from education instruction that, for the seven days. So that number nine really represents uh, an absenteeism rate of seven. Because if we do the average of two students per day for the seven days, it, it still come, when you divide it, it still comes out to the stu, two students, so that number represents um, the difference between the nine students minus two. So we're really looking at seven um, absences per day for um, the elementary school. So for the middle school, we saw a drop down to eight absences per day, which was, is really great during the remote learning. And then we bounced back to eleven, and then of course you can see for the whole district, it dropped a little and then came back up by one student. Is there any questions?
So for, ju- just to, I just want to talk a little bit about the kindergarten note that, that Susan shared, so there is some, in New York State, students that are, what are called of compulsory age must attend school, and so these students are not of compulsory age where they have to attend school. So they are in school and they're enrolled in kindergarten, but they don't legally have to attend school every single day. So those students were allowed to refrain from the remote instruction. Um, but there, I think in both cases, the teacher gave the parent work and the parent did some things with them, the parent was able to keep them up. Uh, they just didn't participate in the remote instruction.
Thank you, Susan, um, and we received a memo from NISID um, g- giving us some guidance on some new reporting requirements. So districts will now have to report to Department of Ed for each enrolled student for each day, whether that student was present or absent. And whether each student was onsite, meaning in person or offsite remote. As well as whether that remote instruction was synchronous or asynchronous. So what's bolded is what is new now as far as reporting attendance. And I wanted to provide this table, um, just basically reviewing the different types of instruction, the description of them and, and just an example. So if you look at in-person instruction, that's your typical students in the building, in-person learning model. When you're looking at synchronous remote instruction, the students are not present in the building. However, they are receiving real time live instruction, which is live streamed through a Google Meet, for example. And then your asynchronous remote instruction, again, students are not present in the building and they are learning remotely. However, this is through pre-recorded lessons or assignments through a Google classroom, not necessarily being live streamed through Google Meet. So those are the differences and those are what we're going to be having to record on now is how the in-person, the synchronous and the asynchronous remote instruction as well. So at this time, does anyone have any questions um, regarding any of the information we provided with the new requirements?
Or the attendance? I know that, that this, that was specifically asked for by a board member was for us to look at the attendance of students, whether they were attending in-person or remote, didn't matter, but just did they attend school and did the pause affect attendance in any way? So that's why we reported on this this evening.
Thank you, um, anybody have any other questions?
I'll just, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, and then um, as I've been doing monthly, I just wanted to go through the COVID nineteen impact. Um, and you know how things are currently going in district. So COVID by the numbers, we've had a total of nineteen cases to date in the district, which is about three percent of our total population. A total of nine students, six elementary school students and three middle school students. Two middle school teachers, one elementary school teacher, three middle school staff, two elementary school staff and two members of our transportation department. In the county, the positivity rate yesterday, which in this case, because it's Monday, covers the weekend, was a nine point three percent positivity rate. And the seven day average positivity rate in the county is seven point seven percent. In district, again, as I said, we've had nineteen cases to date, which is about three percent of our total population. Our current populate, current positivity rate, pardon me, is uh, six cases, I believe, does that say six or five? Down at the bottom, right?
Six.
Six, it's cut off on my screen, the, because of the strip of the zoom, so I can't see the very right side. So uh, six current cases, which is a point nine seven positivity rate currently in the district. Um, so one of the things that we've had a lot of conversations about at the superintendent level is because we're hearing different things from different levels of government, and so we've had a lot of discussion. And I thought I would carry that over here, uh, just to kind of make you aware of the conversations that are happening, because you do hear a lot of different things from different levels of government, so who has the authority here? So the state level, that's the governor and the state department of health, is the main authority in anything related to COVID. They make all the zone designations, they set the guidance that we have to follow, uh, et cetera. And then the local level is advisory in terms of when it comes to schools and districts and how they run. However, they are the authority in terms of quarantining an individual or telling an individual to isolate, isolate due to a positive diagnosis. So the difference between quarantining is, and isolating, isolating is what you do when you are COVID positive. Quarantining is what you do when you've been exposed to someone positive. A quarantining timeline is approximately, is fourteen days, isolation timeline is ten days. So just a little bit about zones, um, you've probably heard it for, if you've watched any of Cuomo's daily briefings, you've probably heard of his yellow zone, his orange zone, his red zone, so I just wanted to review that with the board and with the community. So a yellow zone, if we are, get labeled as a yellow zone, we have to do twenty percent of our in-person population bi-weekly for as long as we're designated yellow. Unless that rate is lower than the zone's current seven day average, then we would not have to continue testing. So we have to test twenty percent of our population, and if our positivity rate, let's say, is three point two and to the, well, I'll, I'll go over that, is one point five, and the regional seven day rate is four point five because we're lower in school than the regional rate, we would be able to cease testing. If it is higher than the regional rate or equal to the regional rate, we would have to continue testing twenty percent of our in-person population bi-weekly for as long as we're designated yellow. If you get designated in an orange zone, you have to test twenty percent of your in-person students, faculty and staff tested over the one month period following the designation, so that's ten percent bi-weekly. And yes, you have to do ten percent bi-weekly, you can't just do twenty percent in the fourth week. You could however, do five percent weekly or ten percent bi-weekly. In a red zone, you have to test thirty percent of your in-person faculty, staff, students. And they must be tested over the one month period following the designation. Uh, or fifteen percent, I'm sorry, and it must be fifteen percent bi-weekly. And again, you could do seven and a half percent weekly if you wanted to. If the orange or red zone random testing yields nine cases or a three percent positivity rate, then the school must close until we go down beneath those numbers. There is no automatic closures anymore, the state has been very clear that they want school districts to remain open as much as possible. So closure is based on a district's willingness to test and/or the positivity rate of reaching that nine cases or three percent positivity. We have been told that schools should ensure that it provides the opportunity to be tested on school grounds and that we are to support testing, or we can accept results from a student's or a staff members or a teacher's healthcare provider as well for part of that twenty percent. There are four different types of testing allowed, one of them is a spit test, which was recently approved. Uh, which for me would be ideal in terms of our students and our staff, it's obviously the least invasive. I think if we tell an eight-year-old kid to spit, they would jump up and down and just be joyful instead of, you know, getting upset that they're getting tests. If we can't get the spit test and we can't find someone to support us with the spit test, we would look to do the nasal swab as opposed to the nar, nasopharynx, and the difference is the location of the nose. So the nasal swab is down below and the lower part of the nose, just kind of like sticking a Q-tip up and just that lower part. And then the nasopharynx is the top part. That's the one where it feels like they touch your brain. Uh, Governor Cuomo has shared this chart several times, for anyone that hasn't seen it. It shows where the COVID cases are coming from, and they do this by interviewing every single case. The Department of Health has to interview and ask a series of questions. Uh, for us in school, I ask those questions and then the Department of Health follows up. Um, but what this says is that seventy, almost seventy-four percent of all cases are coming from household and social gatherings. Uh, if you're looking for school, they are far down, the bottom of the first column, elementary school student, point four nine percent. High, uh, high school student is point four six and middle school student is point one nine percent. Um, so truly, you're the biggest risk for you or anybody is participating in social gatherings in your household or small social gatherings outside of work, they are not seeing the transmission at works, at sports. They are not seeing the transmission at works, at sports, real estate, gyms, childcare, et cetera. They're just, they're not seeing the transition there. That's not saying it doesn't exist, because obviously it does. But the highest rate of transmission occurs in social gatherings. So Governor Cuomo has been stated, quoted, he says, "Due to the adherence to health guidance, it is safer for the children and teachers to be in school. Unless schools are at a problematic infection rate, the school should be open." The local health department is run by Dr. Gellman. And then on December seventh, she wrote a letter to Orange County School Districts, and she has a slightly different opinion about how schools should be running. But again, we have to go back to that authority message that I talked about a little while ago. But we do need to take this into consideration and into account as we make decisions. So Dr. Gellman said urges us to take a holiday pause for in a minimum of fourteen days after each holiday to prevent the transmission from coming into the school setting. Just because the transmission of COVID-19 does not happen as much in school, doesn't mean that the transmission won't impact the continuity of school operations. And we share a common goal of keeping schools open for in-person instruction as long as it is possible to do so safely. So I've had a lot of people ask me, when would we close? Not associated with the pause, but when would we close as a district? Where is the tipping point? Or what do you order the sum of the things that you think of? Basically, when it impacts our school operations beyond the ability to continue to run the building safely with all the students and do all the things we need to do during a typical school day. So that could be due to a number of cases and quarantines. It could be due to a lack of substitutes. We do have some substitutes that we've been calling because they haven't been accepting jobs. And they said, you know, we're just not comfortable coming into school right now. So our substitute pool has gone down. Other possibility, other possible closures would be associated with the zone rules. If we become a zone and we begin testing, again, if we hit that nine cases or the three percent rule, or if our in-district positivity rate reaches a certain extent, then we would be closed. So as Dr. Gellman recommended prior to Thanksgiving, I believe it was in mid-November, she recommended that all districts go on a pause. And at that time, we decided to go on a one-week and one-day pause after the Thanksgiving break, and then to reflect on the information, reflect on the data. So I'm here to share that with you this evening. I looked at all of the cases that occurred after Thanksgiving or because of Thanksgiving that affected the district. And with my numbers, we would have likely had, and I say likely because we don't know the circumstances or when the person would have gone out, called in sick, then gone to the doctor, then get tested. But it's likely that we would have had to quarantine two middle school classes, which is not any more or less than any other week or time period that we've had this year. In terms of absences during the pause, the absences did go up at the elementary level, but they did go down at the middle school level. I do believe our students and staff are safer in the controlled environment that the schools provide because we follow all of the health guidance and expectations of the state. So we have some discussion to have, and I would like the board's thoughts and input and reflection on kind of your thoughts and what you heard from the community during our pause. But we have, one is a discussion regarding a pause after winter break. The option is to have no pause and just resume school on January fourth as scheduled. To do fourteen days past Christmas Day, which would be reopening on Monday, January eleventh, or do a full two-week pause after the end of the current break and reopen on Tuesday, January nineteenth. And that same discussion, we had a request from a board member to discuss the potential of going on pause next week. And I just put in here some things to think about as we have that discussion. With Monday, we have a staff development scheduled. We do have holiday parties scheduled for next week in classrooms as well. The menu for the cafeteria, I've asked for that not to go out till tomorrow, but some may have gone out today before I made that announcement, and that's fine. We do have inclement weather possibilities this week. If I were a guessing woman, or if I read Ben Noel, he would tell me that I'm likely going to dismiss early on Wednesday and be off on Thursday, but we'll see what actually happens with the storm. And then we'd like to have the ability to bring closure to instruction prior to great breaks. So we'd want to make this decision sooner rather than later. So at this time, I just would open it up to the board to see if they have any thoughts or comments, reactions to the Thanksgiving pause, the potential for a pause next week, the potential for pause after break, et cetera. And just maybe we could go around and share. Sue, do you want to lead that conversation? Sue, you're muted.
I'm not sure where I really. I have mixed thoughts on on both a pause next week and a pause after the break. I'm not I'm not sure of pausing or not pausing after break when we go back and reflect on a Thanksgiving pause. For our school district, it was for our cases in the district, it was not that many, but there was a rise in our community, which could have carried over into the building possibly. More so, if they were in-person. But again, I'm not sure, nor do I have a crystal ball. But it's interesting to see what the numbers actually were. And I know all of our neighboring districts, except for one, is closed after Christmas break. And most are closed this week and next week, or offering a choice. One neighboring district is offering a choice if you don't want to send your in-person instruction for K-eight or K-six, I'm not sure if it goes up to seven and eight. So I'm really, I'm really an undecided person for once. I'm not sure. Don't know how I feel. I can give reasons to do either side. And pausing for next week? I don't know if the teachers could wrap up their instruction, but it is a half-day, a full-day, and I think a half-day again. Is next week Wednesday a full day? Sarah? No, thank you, Ann. I see you're nodding. So I'm just not sure, other than the holiday parties and the continuation of normalcy and keeping the building open. So I don't know. I defer to somebody else. Yukon, you're next on my screen, so I'll pass it to you.
I think pausing next week, yeah. If you guys want to, if you guys want to do that, I have no problems with it. Especially when Monday is a late start. Tuesday is the only day that's a full day. Yeah, I have no problems if, you know, if you guys want to go ahead with it. The week after, the pause for the week after the holidays, after Christmas. I mean, it, you know, I would like to see our school stay open. I would like us not to go on that pause. But then again, when you reflect to the Thanksgiving pause, you know, it could go both ways. Either way. Yeah, I'm half and half on the week after. And I'm very positive, you know, if you guys want to, want to close next, next week, because it's only, Tuesday's the only full day. Yeah, I'm all for it.
Aaron, you're next up on my screen. You want to take your turn?
Yeah, I kind of feel the same way as Yukon. Next week, it's a short week, and it's really one full day at school. So if we decide to pause then, I'm fine with that. If we're going to pause after break, I think the eleventh is fine. I don't think we need to wait till the nineteenth to open again. The pause, I guess, adds a level of safety in terms of getting more people back in the building without positive tests. I guess we did see a little spike over the Thanksgiving break. But there'll be more time in here, so I think the eleventh is fine if we decide to pause. That's it for me.
Okay, Matt?
I agree with the next week, definitely. As far as after Christmas, I don't know. That's a, that's a good question right there. You just said with the Thanksgiving, like, I thought for sure the numbers would go up at Thanksgiving, but they kind of didn't. And is it because, you know, not everybody was in school? I don't know how that's going to work out. I'm going to, for me, I'll leave it up to the staff and administrators, you know, to make their best judgment on that. If they want to pull it off, let them pull it off. That's it.
Okay. Yeah, it's a, nobody has a crystal ball anymore. Next, who's next in my line? Michelle, you're up on my next line. There you go.
Yeah, I'm going to agree. You know, not coming in next week is fine. It's a very short week. And with all the quarantine rules, you know, we wouldn't want to mess up someone's Christmas if they're now, they now have to quarantine for going in one day. After Christmas, I think the fourteen days past Christmas is okay. I think waiting till the nineteenth is a little long. At least the fourteen days past Christmas, if anyone has to quarantine, it gives them a little time. Gives the school some time. That's what I would agree with.
Thanks, Michelle. Barbara?
So I don't really understand closing next week, but whatever you all want is fine by me all. It's up to Sarah anyway, realistically, so whatever she decides, I will support. And one hundred percent closing after Christmas, I think is the right way to go, because it's been working so well, and we all know it's been working so well. And I think that that is how we're going to keep it working as well as it has been working. And we all need and want the school to be open, because we do, right? That's the goal always. Personally, I think we should be closed longer than, up until whatever the day was. You said, I don't even remember what the date was.
The Monday, January eleventh would be fourteen days past Christmas Day. And then
Hello?
Can you hear me? Sorry.
Now I can hear. Yes, I must have froze.
And then the nineteenth would be two, full two weeks after, like, New Year's, basically.
So, so the eleventh would be fourteen days to go to be back to school is?
Fourteen days approximately after Christmas break. It would be slightly more than that, but yes.
Slightly more than that? So like Sue said, you know, so school seemed to be okay, but our community was a little active, I'll use that word, which is concerning. But again, I know it's not entirely up to us. It's Sarah's decision, and again, I support it, but I would personally close a little bit longer, but again, no crystal ball. I'll use Sue's words again. But it's tricky, and it is ramping up, and it's real. But
I wish I had a crystal ball. I'm just going to say that, because it would make this so much easier for everybody.
Yeah. There was like five-hundred-and-forty-six cases since Friday in the county. But it's just, it's
Okay, so
It's like Russian roulette.
For you, you, you support a pause after Christmas?
A hundred percent.
Of some form, of some length.
Yes, we'll say it like that.
Yeah, this is, I don't envy you, Sarah, in this decision on what's the right thing to do. In-person instruction for children is the best. But having a large amount quarantined and stressing our system and potentially not having enough staff and having to pause anyway is the alternative. A neighboring district did not open on time this week because of a staff, lack of staff. And that's, that's a very real thing, and that, that's a large district compared to us. It, you know, we don't need as many people out to not be able to open. So I, you know, summarizing what I've heard, next week pausing is okay. If, if it can be pulled off in such short notice, I do worry about parents that need childcare on short notice. That is a concern always. I would like to, I am curious, and I will ask the question that came up, is how many quarantine students did we have over the time we were open due to our numbers in the community? Not, not quarantine, not positive students, but quarantining students.
So I can, I could, I don't have them right here in front of me, but I could do a little bit of math quickly and get them within the next couple of minutes. If you wanted me to work on that while you go through the rest of the board agenda, I could start showing all those numbers for you.
Well, I
We could, we did collect information, and I have, like I said, I have it read accessible. I just don't have it right in front of me, so.
Right. That, that is something to consider. It is how, how it affects the, that's part of affecting our day-to-day. Is if we have a large amount quarantined, it does affect our day-to-day. It's a shift in instruction in some classrooms that are just all in-person. And that is something to be considered. It is hard on teachers to shift like that and have livestream in. It, this is, like I said, I don't envy you. I support your decision. I'm sure we all support your decisions. But nobody, nobody knows what January fourth is going to look like when we had five-hundred-and-forty-six cases in the county over the weekend, so. Aaron, did you want to say something?
Sarah, does a decision on pausing after the break need to be made before we go on break?
I would try, am I, yeah, I would try to make it before we went on breaks that parents had enough time to plan. What I, what I would really like to do is take all this information into consideration, make a choice, make a decision by midday tomorrow, and inform everybody of the plan by end of day tomorrow. That would be my goal. And in regards to both next week and the week after break, week or two after break.
Okay. Everybody else okay? I mean, I think we do have to remember our working parents and childcare. Very hard to get childcare on a short notice, so the most time they have to prepare is better. Does anybody have any other comments, thoughts on this subject? Okay. What do we have up next, Sarah? On your presentation, do we go into?
Oh, that would just be
Buildings and grounds? Facilities update, our filters are complete?
So Sue Lapre just texted me because she is a whiz and a magician. So Sue Lapre just texted me because she is a whiz and a magician. Um, she has thirty. Thirty-eight students uh currently under quarantine.
Thirty-eight?
Yeah, across K eight.
Was there a a higher point than that um in the last week off the top of your head?
If I can just let you know, thirty-eight was during the time that from November twenty-fifth to December seventh. We um had thirty-eight students. Some of them overlapped, some of them didn't, but my data shows thirty-eight students. Since we've been back, it looks like we have thirty quarantined over the four days that we were back. And as of today. Precisely today, we have.
We had twenty-eight at the middle school. I know that today.
Yep, we have. The number I said previously.
Thirty?
Yeah. Today we're down to thirty.
Thank you for having all of that information so quickly. It it it's a lot, but how many students in total that are in person?
We have. Three hundred and forty-eight students in person, a hundred and ten remote.
Okay, so it was thirty out of three hundred and forty-eight. About. Um. It's not that large of a percentage, but it went varied across multiple classrooms, so I'm sure it is a a stressor. So, thank you, guys. Um, we will move on and I know I will do a facilities committee update. Um, besides a kitchen, we've had our meetings. We're working on, um. The punch list at the, for the summer capital project is is winding down. Um, it's coming closer towards the end. There's, all the filters are now installed correctly, including the desktop one, Sarah or Ann? Yes, yes, okay.
The MIR filters are installed across the entire district.
All right, and does somebody have a a water update for the community? We have any?
Rob, do you want to speak to where we are with the water issue at the middle school?
Uh, sure, actually, we just did, uh, we just collected samples today. Um, we flushed the system. We're hoping for the best. Um, it takes about three weeks to get the results in. Uh, they finished the piping going in and coming out of the new filtration system with copper. And uh, we still do have plastic for the collagen manifold.
We do?
Correct, yes, we do.
All right, uh, so hopefully by the time our next meeting rolls around, we will have the results and know if we've come up with our final. Complete fix of the problem and move on.
That's the goal.
That is the goal. We've been trying. Um, the policy committee needs to update. Anybody on a policy committee want to jump in here?
We finished the four thousand.
It was too easy.
It was a lot.
It was, and we were very night, we had uh Ms. Petrosi, Amy got to join us for part of it. And hopefully our notes are turned in and four thousands will come back to us and we can do a first read on the four thousand soon. And we're expecting the next section and some year will be finished. I don't know what year. Sarah, is there anything else on on those things? We're we've, we got there, we're good?
We're good. Thank you very much for your time this evening. I know that was a lot, but.
That was a lot. Um, I'm gonna say I have nothing to add and we'll move on to, um. The PTSA liaison report. Do we have a PTSA liaison? Otherwise, I have it. I have the report for them. Did somebody want to speak from the PTSA? Okay, um, they would like to remind everybody that the Gingerbread House competition is in full force. Photos must be submitted by email uh before December eighteenth at eight PM to G W L P T S A at gmail dot com. Um, you must have pictures of all four sides and no children in the photos. And there will be a Facebook polling vote that opens on the nineteenth and winners announced on the twenty-first. And the other thing I'd like to remind everybody about is Amazon Smile directly donates to the PTSA if you um pick them as your organization. And that's another way to fundraise and and donate to the PTSA just through your shopping. Moving on, do we have Village of Greenwood Lake Liaison tonight? Is Kathleen here? Okay. Um, and the OU Bosse's member report. I attended the meeting along with Matt and Sarah, virtual meeting. They had a presentation of the Mid Hudson Study Council and Brian Fessler also presented legislative updates for NISBA. It was a very, very long, long meeting. I think I'm the only one that lasted to the end because it was a couple hours. And um, always informative. And then we have, um, we can have our high school liaison reports. Matt, you want to go? For Chester?
Uh, with Chester, they're, they're staying close into Martha Luther King Day. Um, and the other other thing was with a C-Tech transportation, which we talked about. They weren't transporting to C-Tech and we took it on ourselves to transport, so that's about it with that.
Yep, and I did get a very, I did get a very nice thank you note from one of the parents um saying how much they appreciated. Um, us remembering the high school students and keeping them um at the forefront of our mind and trying to keep them in school as well.
Good, and Yuquan, do you want to give us an update for Warwick?
Yeah, Warwick's still remote until January nineteen. And like Matt said, we're gonna provide transportation to C-Tech students. That's, that's it.
Thank you. And then last, we have a legislative update. Matt, you have. I know you emailed our legislative update. Do you have anything to uh say to the community?
Um, well, yeah, the the biggest thing with that is obviously the aid to all the school districts. And with us, it was about the transportation aid. Transportation aid for us was um transporting meals to remote students. Transporting anything COVID-related around with our transportation department. And that was looking good at one time, but then got knocked down right away. Now it seems to be revived again because um. Uh, New York State School Board Association sent out many letters to all of us. We all got them. And wanted us to send letters back to our legislators saying we need this aid and it should be covered. For everything because if the school districts didn't have, you know, they knew that aid was gonna be cut. They probably would have laid off most of our transportation departments from the beginning. And so now they already have that cost and they really do need that aid. Um, as of right now. From what Cuomo said and from what the state legislators are pushing, it, and looks like uh he's gonna revisit it. It's gonna revisit with the state budget administrator, so that looks like it's going in a positive direction, hopefully. Um, as far as other things legislatively wise, uh. I guess the requirement for a hundred eighty days of instruction was a pass where we, there will be no penalties incurred for that. That's a good one for us. Not that we really need that. Um, what else is there? For, and the other thing was basically the financial relief where you could take funds. And move them around if you need it for COVID-related items. That was a a biggie for a lot of school districts. Uh, I'm sure Sarah has something else. Go ahead, Sarah. I mean us.
Yeah, the only other thing that that I thought of and I sent an email out to the staff this afternoon about it. Is that the Federal Families First Coronavirus Response Act. Or as we call it in district and most people call it across the nation, the FF-CRA Act. Um, is going to be ending as of December thirty-first without action from the federal government to extend it. So as of right now, anyone that's infected with COVID or quarantined doesn't have to take sick days or personal days. They're given kind of free, up to ten free days. Um, as well as people that have childcare issues with regards to, specific to the coronavirus. Um, with their school or their daycare closing. Uh, so we've supported many of our employees through that. Um, I will have an update for you in January with actual numbers. Um, but it is my hope that the federal government continues that and extends that, but as of right now, it does end December thirty-first. Uh, so without action from the state or from the federal government. Uh, we're going back to staff using uh their time. We would not have that act. So, um, I will be advocating to our state senators and encourage anyone else to do so as well. Our federal state senators, not our local state senators.
Right, um, also, uh, Board of Regents is looking to reinstate some of our. They're, they're pushing for reinstatement of some of our funding that was cut to be put back. Um, that that came out today. Um, it's always nice when the Board of Regents gets behind it, too. The more pressure we put on them, the better off it is to to return some of our, our missing aid. Um, but that's about it. Let's later, it's a, there's never this much legislative interest ever for these things until COVID. Um, but moving on, I think we, the next thing is on our agenda is to discuss the transportation aid, which we, Matt just gave a. Sure, go ahead, Matt.
More things to, like, like you said about, you know, and Sarah about getting back and calling and sending letters. Like us board members, we get them all the time in our emails. And that actually worked by everybody sending back the letters and, you know, there's links to contact your legislators to say. You know, it worked with the transportation aid. It seems to, you know, got their attention. So I advise everybody to uh look at those emails and do click on them and then.
Yes.
Find something you want to support, don't support, you know, have you say, that's about it.
Right, yes, when they're in our emails like that and they're sent to us individually as a board member. Um, you can respond as an individual board member, as an elected official. It's not a board discussion and a board, then the board can come together and then discuss it like we were going to for the transportation aid to send a letter. But the individual ones that NISBA sends out with the links, um, if it's something you support, please answer, please send it. Um, it does help. It definitely helped with the transportation aid. Matt, Matt's correct. Um, the more letters you send, sometimes the faster things change. So, uh, Matt, did you want anything else for the discussion of transportation aid? You were the one leading that?
We have a, a letter that they want us to adopt and send as a board. Um, so basically we have to agree as a board to send that letter back. Saying we do want the transportation aid for our school district. So, we open that up to the board members discussing like what's your feelings on that?
Yeah, the letter um is is specific to what they're saying is to, if if the district can prove and provide the information, if I'm correct, Ann. That we transported meals or supplies during the COVID closure. They are going to find that eatable is what the legislation, what they're trying to do is return the aid just for those specific things. Um, and also which doesn't apply to us is any contracts um up until May first. So if anybody on the board has any comments for that or feels strongly about sending it or not sending it, I'll go around. Barbara? Would you like to?
Yes.
Send a letter or not send a letter?
Absolutely send a letter.
Okay, Michelle?
Yes, I say absolutely send it.
Okay, Erin?
I'm with everyone, send it.
Okay, Yuquan? All right, thumbs up from Yuquan. Um, Mary, you have a uh a form letter. If you could just um spruce that up for us and maybe send us a copy before it gets mailed out and we'll read it over. I would appreciate that. Thank you. And we can move on. If nobody has anything else to say, can we move on to privilege of the floor? If anyone from the community would like to speak, now is your time. Please remember to give your name and address and you're limited to three minutes and all the other rules. Anyone? And Sarah's laughing at me. Okay, we're going to move on to new business. Adopt our twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two vision and district goals. We are going to do a motion to adopt these goals and I am gonna let Sarah read them. You read, you read the, I'll read the vision, you read the goals. How's that? We'll split it. Our vision as we went over in our workshop is. Through providing an environment conducive to learning, the Greenwood Lake Union Free School District will teach each student the skills needed to acquire and process knowledge while developing and fostering social, emotional, and multicultural awareness. This will empower each student to continue to set future goals for personal growth and contribute to the betterment of society. Goals?
In order to achieve that vision, we have the following, the Board of Education looks to adopt the following goals. Number one, inspire the love of learning in all members of our school community. Two, preserve and enhance the local educational program for Greenwood Lake students. Three, understand and respond to students' individual learning differences. Four, offer a cost-effective education aligned with the district's strategic plan that utilizes best practices and academic research. Provide students and staff the resources and infrastructure necessary. I'm sorry, required for optimum teaching and learning in a safe and healthy environment. Five, develop the strength of character and knowledge necessary to cultivate responsible citizens who are prepared to live in a diverse and ever-changing world. And six, pursue the, continue the pursuit of excellence in education for all students of the Greenwood Lake School District.
Okay. I would um like a motion to adopt the district goals for twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two as stated. Motion please. Erin, second by Barbara. Is there any discussion? I know we have lengthy discussion about this, but is there any final comments before the vote? No? Okay, all in favor? Against, opposed? All right, motion carries six zero. We now have our new goals in place for next year. Moving on to the next item, a motion to approve the November twenty twenty financials as presented. Motion please. Yuquan, second. Barbara, uh, any discussion? Okay, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carries six zero. A motion to approve the transfer due to the increase of the OU Bosse C-Tech students as presented. A motion pleased. Michelle, second by Barbara. Any discussion on this? Okay, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carries six zero. A motion to approve budget transfer to break out the musical instrument rental as presented, and I'm gonna read. Um, the whole thing so the community understands. On the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, a motion to adopt the following resolution. Be it resolved, Board of Education hereby approves the transfer of fifteen thousand to the general fund instruction contractual. Be it resolved, Board of Education hereby approves the transfer of fifteen thousand to the general fund instruction contractual instrumental rental from general fund instruction contractual, and there's numbers, to monitor student participation in the new arts and arts and education initiative. And just to be clear, this was in our budget and we're just moving it. It's not something that wasn't in our budget. We're just moving it to a separate line item so that it is easier to see for our district and to keep track of. May I have a motion, please? Michelle, second by Matt. Is there any discussion in this? Okay, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carries six zero. A motion to approve the elementary school, middle school change orders for arrow plumbing and heating as presented. May I have a motion, please? Yuquan, a second. Barbara, is there any discussion on this? Any questions? Okay, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carries six zero. A motion to approve the elementary cafeteria as presented. This motion, to be clear, I'll read it, is upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, a motion to adopt the following resolution. The voters approved an elementary school cafeteria renovation of the current space to address concerns articulated by staff, faculty, and parents who incorporate a bathroom space for student use, improved light and air quality, a serving space appropriate to small children, acoustic modifications to reduce noise, a kitchen upgrade and water mitigation. And whereas the design submitted by Felinger Engineering meets these qualifications. Therefore, it is resolved that the board authorizes the superintendent of schools to move forward with some mittles to the New York State Education Department for approval. A motion, please. Erin, a second by Yuquan. Any discussion? Okay, my only comment is this is, just to clarify, already voter approved. This is just to send the plans and to move forward at this point. So all in favor? Opposed? Motion carries six zero. A motion to approve third-party review capital project submissions to NICE Ed as presented. This is expedite our process. Yuquan for the motion, a second? Michelle? Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries six zero. A motion to approve evaluation agreement with S J and Associates as presented. Motion? Yuquan, a second? Erin, thank you. Um, any discussion? Okay, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carries six zero. A motion to adopt the retention and disposition schedule for New York State Local Government Records L G S dash one as presented. Motion? Yuquan, second? Barbara? Um, any discussion on this? This is a change in state law, I believe, is the short version. Okay, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carries six zero. A motion to adopt revisions to policy number five, six, seven, zero, record management as presented. The Board of Education hereby waives the second reading and adopts the revisions to the policy number five, six, seven, oh, record management at the first reading. Motion, please? Michelle, a second. Matt, any discussion? Okay, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carries six zero.
Can I just check if Barbara is still there? Because Barbara is frozen. I I don't think she's with us anymore. Some of the votes may be five zero because her screen was frozen.
Barbara, I just saw her move again. Are you there?
Yes, my internet is lovely this evening. Sorry.
Okay, do you want to change the last two to five zero since we didn't see her or revise? Mary, how do we do that? You're muted. Unmute, Mary.
She's frozen a mic screen now also.
Dear internet, though. Yeah, Mary, how do we change anything if she was frozen for the vote?
Well, if she if Barbara voted and we just didn't see her vote because she was frozen, she's fine. Otherwise, we need to do five zero and I'll know.
Barbara, were you voting yes?
I was.
Yes, okay. Clear. Okay. A motion to approve the S M.
No, I was just gonna say Barbara should pay her internet bill.
Thanks, Yuquan.
That would be.
I'm happy it's at her end of the street right now and not my end of the street because it's really bad when I'm frozen. Um, moving on, eight point one one, a motion to approve the S M O A between the district and the Greenwood Lake Teachers Association as presented. A motion, please? Yuquan, thank you. A second, Erin. Is there any discussion? No. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries six zero. A motion to approve the S M O A between the district and the Greenwood Lake School Custodial Staff as presented. Motion, please.
Sue?
What?
I just need to make note on your executive content. I had difficulty removing one of them. There was an edit, a couple edits minor done at the last minute earlier this evening, and I couldn't remove the first one. So you're voting on the second one. Just so you know.
And there is no uh, actual content.
Significant change?
No. But there's two listed in your executive content. I just want to make sure you're aware of that.
Okay, when I looked at it, there was only one. Does anybody have any questions on the second one? No? Okay, we're all okay to move forward. Okay, the motion to approve the S M O A between the district and the school custodial staff as presented. Motion, please. Erin, second by Matt. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed. Barbara, are you frozen again? Oh, there you go. Thank you. Freeze with your hand up. Opposed, none. Motion carries six zero. A motion to approve and adopt the minimum wage plan increased, Governor Cuomo signed into law, the minimum wage plan increase in the state's minimum wage to twelve fifty by December thirty-first, twenty twenty. Therefore, be it resolved effective January one, twenty twenty-one, Board of Education hereby approves increasing this the substitute school-related personnel hourly rage to thirteen sixty-five. May I have a motion, please? Erin, a second by Yuquan. Is there any discussion to this? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries six zero. Nine point two, a motion to approve Deirdre Doughty to serve as a permanent daily substitute as presented. Motion, please. Oh, Erin, thank you. Matt, for a second? Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries six zero. A motion to accept the resignation of Ariel Badoo as presented. Motion, please. Matt, second by Erin. Any discussion? Uh, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carries six zero. A motion to accept the C S E, C P S E recommendations from meetings of December twenty-third, December fourth, December ninth, seventh, November twenty-third, November seventeenth, and November sixteenth. Yes, I read them out of order. A motion, please? Matt, second. Barbara, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carries six zero. We are at the end. We have no executive session tonight. Sarah?
No, I have no reasons for.
Nope. No reason for executive session. Our next Board of Education meeting will take place on Monday, January eleventh by Zoom or to be determined. And may I have a motion to close the meeting at eight forty-nine? Barbara, thank you. Erin, for a second? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries six zero. Thank you, everyone that attended. We always appreciate seeing all your faces. And we're done.